Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023 Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum up here with Mayor Protem Gilman excused. Before we get into approving the agenda, I want to make a brief announcement, which is a tribute to a former council member. Former city council member and Mayor Protem Gil Carbone passed away recently at the age of 94. I'd like to share a few memories that his family sent along to me. For most of the 20th century, Olympia was governed by a three-person commission, which served as both the legislative and executive authorities of the city. Mr. Carbone, who had moved his young family to Olympia in the late 60s, experienced the pitfalls of this system in 1973, when he sought a ruling by the city commission. He discovered that contrary to the state open-public meetings law, the commission was making decisions in unnoticed, private discussions prior to official public meetings. Mr. Carbone was understandably outraged, and this is how his interest in city politics was born. Not an unusual story for a lot of people to get involved. Mr. Carbone began focusing on changing the three-person commission to a council-manager form of government. He spent the next eight years writing letters to the editor and sending press releases to the Daily Olympian while drumming up support from organizations like the League of Women Voters, community leaders, and influencers. In 1982, the movement he had started was finally successful. A ballot proposition had been passed to change Olympia's form of government into the council-manager system that we have today. Undeterred by his unsuccessful bid for mayor nine years earlier, Mr. Carbone ran successfully for position three on the first newly-formed seven-person council, and he was seated in 1982. He continued serving on the council until 1991, including two years as Mayor Protem. His primary goal during his 10 years on the council was to develop a master plan for community development that would ensure ongoing revitalization. I'm pretty sure that would be a precursor to our 1994 comprehensive plan. Gil also served on several boards, including nine years on what's known today as intercity transit. He also was instrumental in establishing the Community Foundation of South Puget Sound. His legacy includes improved public buildings, neighborhood parks, rehabilitated housing, improved streets, better police and fire protection, improved parking and traffic flow, and also stormwater management and city utility management. He was especially proud, we were discussing with the family, whether this was a proud thing or he was outraged again by the Carbone carbuncle at Fourth Avenue and Water Street. And if you can picture that in your mind, that's that connection that curves around by the Ro Restaurant in the Madrone apartment building. Many people have wondered, like, how the heck did that happen? Well, it happened under Carbone's watch, but not necessarily to his satisfaction. He also was very proud of the Percival Creek Bridge, enabling the revenue-generating auto mall, as well as improved fire, police, and emergency services to that area. But perhaps the most significant contribution he made is ensuring transparency in the governance of Olympia. So I've also allocated some time for his daughter Carol Carbone to speak to us.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I appreciate it. I just want to add a little personal spin to his service with the city. And I'd like to expand a little bit on that first incident that got my dad riled up with the commission. And the reason he approached them is a cafe right across the street from our house in our neighborhood had applied for a liquor license. And he was concerned because it wasn't just our family and four little girls that live there, but a whole neighborhood with many families, many kids, that would be facing the traffic going in and out of that, you know, on the road across the street from the cafe. So, you know, he, he just, he was concerned, and he, more than anything, he was concerned about not just our family, but the community that surrounded us. And I think that's kind of evident in his legacy. And he was never in it for, you know, power. He, you know, he wanted to make it a better place. He wanted to enrich the community. And he believed that doing that was the responsibility of all citizens. So he worked tirelessly, and he did that all while working in his other job, which was the Assistant Director at the State Board for Community Colleges. Now, we had a little bit different perspective as kids. It was a little embarrassing to, you know, have your dad on the radio or writing inflammatory letters to the editor, or driving into the school parking lot with a, you know, a campaign sign pasted to the top of your car. But now we have a little bit different perspective on it. And, you know, in the end, he taught us to speak truth to power, to stop complaining and take action. And he's left that legacy not with just his four daughters, but 10 grandkids. And now we don't see him as an embarrassment at all, but he's our hero. So I would like to end with quoting something he wrote about a state election. I'm not sure which year. "The Olympian issue included a story about four longshots who entered the gubernatorial race for the coming election. Judging from reports of their fundraising progress, they are indeed longshots. But I am glad that they have the energy to take on that kind of challenge. That is what America is all about. No person is beneath our rights to seek a better way with our laws and customs."
Nicely said.
A service in his honor has yet to be scheduled, but if anyone would like to make a donation on his behalf, we would be thrilled if you would consider the Community Foundation for South Puget Sound. And so I thank you for honoring him today.
Thank you for being here and for your whole, I think you're all here, some in the chambers and some remote. So, four daughters, lots of stories there, too, I'm sure.
Two sisters here and one remotely. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Thanks so much for reaching out to us. At this time, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. Takes us on to a special recognition, and this evening we'll be recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day in Olympia by reading a proclamation. And I believe I have Councilmember Cooper starting.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. "Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on the Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day is a day to recognize and celebrate Indigenous heritage, culture, and history while honoring past, current, and future generations. And..."
Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day is a time to lift up the rich history and resilience of Indigenous people through colonization and assimilation, as well as to celebrate their culture and strength through self-determination. And...
Whereas the city of Olympia honors and acknowledges the Indigenous people who have stewarded this land since time immemorial and who still inhabit the area, the Stachas Band of Indigenous People of the Squawson Island Tribe. And...
Whereas today, the Stachas Squawson people continue to steward these ancestral lands from the Deschutes watershed and what is now Bud Inlet, and the Squawson continue to call themselves people of the water because of the bounty of the region's waterways and Artesian waters, which have sustained the people for millennia. And...
Whereas both the Squawson Island Tribe and the city of Olympia honor the Medicine Creek Treaty and have established a strong government-to-government relationship between the two sovereigns. And whereas, on October 7th, 2021, the city of Olympia resigned and reaffirmed their accord with the Squawson Island Tribe in the spirit of understanding, mutual respect, and commitment to long-term actions. And...
Whereas the city of Olympia celebrates the thriving culture and value that Squawson Island, Nisqually, Pualip, Chehalis, Suquamish, Duwamish, and other Indigenous nations add to our city. And now therefore be it resolved that the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim October 9th, 2023, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Olympia, Washington, and encourages all Olympians to continue reflecting on the experiences and contributions of Indigenous people and amplify their voices far beyond this day. Signed in the city of Olympia, Washington, this third day of October 2023, Olympia City Council, Cheryl Selby, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to invite forward Squawson Tribal Member Jeremiah George to receive the proclamation and make some comments.
Thank you. We've brought some of our elected tribal council members and some family members to be a part of the proclamation. And just to get things started, I was going to sing, in respect of time, sing one verse of blessing song that comes from my great-grandfather, or great-grandfather, I should say, which is also my mother's grandfather here, who is also a member of the tribal council. So...
Oh, CM, decisively seats. My name is Jamie Cruz, and I am the Vice Chairwoman of the Squawson Island Tribe. I stand here with my Ms. Hazel and Angeline here, and we're just so grateful that the city of Olympia is honoring Squawson Island with this proclamation. I think it's just one thing that my daughters are going to grow up and see and attend these types of events, and they're going to feel welcome in the city of Olympia. And I just think it's important that we start off with a song and start off in a good way. And our people here at home, we have a lot of our members who reside here in Olympia, and we have a lot of our fishermen who are out there in the water, like as we speak now, catching the fish and bringing them home. Granny's got salmon smoking right now. That we're going, it's bountiful. Like, this is like our home, and we've been here. And I believe Chairman Peter said it last year, that although there was just a lot of terrible things that have happened in the past, it's time that we continue to move forward. And what can we learn from that? And what can we teach our children and the next seven generations on what it is that we are Squawson people, who we are, what is it that we're going to do to continue to be stewards of the land? And it just really brings me honor to represent my people here today. And I'm very honored to be able to show off my little Angeline. I will say she's four months today, and Ms. Hazel butt here. And so our hands are raised to all of you, and we're going to take this home, and we're going to tell our community the respect that you guys all have shown to us. So, he's cool, he's your butt.
Thank you. Any comments from the deus? Of course, Councilman Madrone?
I just want to thank you all for taking the time to be here today. And I always welcome babies into council chambers. So, thanks for bringing the babies.
Councilmember Carson?
I was going to say the same thing. I enjoy the children. They're spontaneous and honest. I think for me, one of the most rewarding and enriching things in being on council for the last six years is seeing our relationship with the tribe improve and grow. And I can't wait to see what it does in the future.
And thanks for setting a wonderful tone and intention for the rest of our meeting tonight. Have a good evening. All right. So normally, this would be time for a public comment to be scheduled for our agenda, but we did not have anybody sign up for this evening. So we are going to move right along to adopting our consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any questions, comments, or polls this evening? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent calendar is adopted. And as always, I want to thank staff because they put a lot of work into these reports. We don't want to dismiss how important that is. Next, we have a public hearing to consider an ordinance declaring a continuing state of a public health emergency related to homelessness, houselessness. First and final reading, and this is something that's come before us many, many times over the years. And this will be the last one for another year now. We've started extending the time limit to a year instead of six months. And to speak to this ordinance, I have Darian Lightfoot, who's our Director of Housing and Homeless Response.
Greetings. Thank you, Councilwoman Mayor. Yes, we are here tonight about the emergency declaration around homelessness. This was first declared in 2018. And as the mayor said, it's previously been extended every six months, but now we've worked it in to be extended for another year. Since then, the city's been able to do a ton of work around housing and homeless response. We've established a home fund, which has allowed us to really propel a lot of our permanent supportive housing projects, created almost 200 units of temporary housing to remove people from the elements and have some respite and reprieve, and established a regional housing council, which has allowed us to lean on our regional partners and therefore create a regional home fund that has really propelled a ton of our work. There's still a desperate need remaining in this declaration. It's really important for the work that we're looking to move forward. This will allow us to come back to you in a year. And again, like we did last week, talk about all the work that we've been able to do, how this declaration has allowed us to do that work, and how we're really planning to continue to address the emergency. This declaration brings priority and focus to our work and allows us to streamline a lot of our processes within the city. Like our Franz Anderson Tiny Home Village, we were able to stand up a facility of that size within months because we could move through our public works processes and engage with contractors in a way that doesn't afford us to do without this declaration. So we're just really grateful that this is here because we have been able to respond to the needs of our community just much quicker. So that's before you tonight, and I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Darian tonight?
Thanks for that great explanation. It also gives us an opportunity to highlight some of the work that we have done.
Thank you. So at this time, I will open a motion, sorry. I will open the public hearing on an ordinance declaring a continuing state of public health emergency related to houselessness. Nobody, again, signed up for this public hearing, but for public hearings, we do offer the opportunity for people in the audience, if they are so moved, to come up and address the council. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to this hearing? Is there anybody here tonight? All right. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. At this time, I need a motion to approve this ordinance on first and final reading, and we need a majority for that to happen.
So moved. Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Sorry. I was giving you the motion to pick. Sorry. That's all right. I know, I kind of took you off-guard on that one. I'm used to handing it to the Mayor Protem. It's like, gotcha. Anyhow. Next, we are on to item 6A, which is pending approval of Grass Lake Nature Park Public Art Project. This is to consider adding it to the work plan for our Arts Commission and to release a draft call for art. So at this point, I'd like to invite forward Jim Burlingham, who is Chair of our Arts Commission, and Stephanie Johnson, who is our Arts Commission staff liaison.
Thank you, Mayor Selby, and members of council. For the record, Stephanie Johnson, Arts Program and Planning Supervisor with Parks Arts and Recreation, here with Jim Burlingham, Chair of the Olympia Arts Commission, and Laura Keahan, who is Parks Planning and Design Manager in general, and just helping us out with questions, if you have any for this particular project. We are here today to propose a mid-year addition to the Arts Commission work plan. Grass Lake Nature Park is slated for improvements in mid-2024, and the project both triggers the 1% for art ordinance and offers an interesting possibility for a public art project. At 195.71 acres, the park contains the headwaters of the Green Cove Creek and one of the most environmentally intact wetland systems in northern Thurston County. Over 100 bird species and 200 plant species have been recorded in the park. And Grass Lake Nature Park's primary functions are wildlife protection, wildlife viewing, and environmental education. Upcoming park improvements include an asphalt bicycle and pedestrian shared-use trail through Grass Lake Nature Park from a new trailhead parking area on Kaiser Road and connecting to Harrison Road to the south. A 365-foot-long boardwalk is proposed where the trail will cross over a category-one wetland. And the boardwalk will have two bumpouts to provide seating and a bird blind. The trailhead will include parking spaces for 10 vehicles and a school bus in order to accommodate stewardship activities and outdoor education at the park.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Building the project around the 10-foot-by-23-foot steel water tank existing on the property offers the potential to redirect salvage material for creative reuse and the opportunity for a deeper connection to the recent history of the site. The proposed project would include creation of an approximately 6-foot-by-10-foot bird blind, so that visitors can watch birds without being seen by them, and two entry markers at Harrison Avenue and Kaiser Road from the repurposed steel. We're excited about the opportunity to bring youth into this project. Students in Thurgood Marshall Middle School Citizen Science Institute know a lot about the science of the park, and who better to introduce these selected artists to the nature in the area than these young scientists? If approved, the draft call for art will be finalized and made available for artist response. We intend to bring an artist recommendation to you in January 2024 and work toward concept plan approval in May. The question before you is to approve the Grass Lake Nature Park Public Art Project as an addition to the Arts Commission work plan and the draft call for art for Grass Lake Nature Park.
Okay. Any discussion from the council or questions? We did get a briefing on this a little...
Yeah, a little bit of deja vu there, I think.
Recently, yes. And so I think we have a good idea of where you're going with this. So this is just to approve the funding and the work plan.
Right. We were with Community Liveability and Public Safety Committee. So, yes, it was a deja vu for a little bit. Not all of you, just some of you.
You know what? They all kind of, you know, merge together in our brain sometimes. So, yes. So this is the first time for the full council to see it. Thank you. So this does require a motion, and... Let's try this again.
Okay. I move to approve the Grass Lake Nature Park Public Art Project as an addition to the Arts Commission work plan and the draft call for the art for Grass Lake Nature Park. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Next, we have item 6... Sure.
I just want to say how cool I think that reuse is, like having this be the first time I've heard this. It's great to salvage some stuff on the site and make art out of it. So can't wait to see what you do.
Yes. All right. Our last item of business this evening is to receive a briefing on the Americans with Disability Act Transition Plan. This is our 2022 report to the community. And it's my honor to invite forward Michelle Swanson, who is the Senior Planner with the city.
Great. Thank you very much, Mayor Selby. And as the mayor said, I am Michelle Swanson. I'm a Senior Planner in Public Works Transportation. And I am indeed here to tell you about the 2022 Report to the Community on the progress that the city has made in implementing the recommendations of the ADA Transition Plan. So you might be wondering why one of the transportation planners is here to talk about a citywide effort. And the reason is that I bring experience with capital planning and report-writing to this effort, but I also have backup here tonight in the form of Nicole Camus. She is here as well. She is the city's Deputy Director of Human Resources, and until very, very recently, has been the city's ADA Coordinator. She's here to answer any questions that I might not be able to answer. And if you are curious about the role of the ADA Coordinator and its transition, it is transitioning to be under the umbrella of the city's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Program. Now, the Americans with Disabilities Act, or the ADA, is a federal civil rights law that was passed in 1990. It prohibits discrimination against people with disabilities in access to jobs, accommodations, government services and programs, transportation, and telecommunications. The law applies to a wide variety of services, programs, and infrastructure that the city is responsible for. One requirement of the ADA is that local governments inventory the barriers to access that fall under their purview and create a plan for removing those barriers. That's what the city's ADA Transition Plan does. It was adopted by the city council in May of 2021. One of the recommendations of the transition plan was that the city track its progress on how it's doing with implementation. So that is the purpose of this report to the community. Since this is our first report, it covers the time period from when the plan was adopted in May of 2021 through the end of 2022. Moving forward, we plan to report out annually. So next year, we will report out on progress made during 2023, et cetera. The city has integrated accessibility improvements in many aspects of its work for a long time, and each department takes its own approach. So, for example, in transportation, we routinely include access improvements, like curb ramps, with most of our projects, and the costs are included in each project. While the Parks Department has a program in the Capital Facilities Plan that it dedicates funding toward. Across many departments, accessibility improvements are often integrated into routine maintenance projects as well. With the transition plan, we've been better able to track our progress across the whole city and look for opportunities to improve accessibility, both with capital projects and also with maintenance. And the process of compiling this report helps ensure that the transition plan doesn't remain a static snapshot in time. It's rather a living document that shows the progress that we're making from year to year. So let's talk about some of the highlights from this report. Under transportation, 342 curb ramps were updated to current standards. This includes both those that were upgraded as part of city-built projects and those that were upgraded as part of private development projects. One of the recommendations of the transition plan was that city staff maintain and update and inventory of curb ramps on a regular basis, which we now do. This alone is a significant work effort, since there are nearly 6,000 locations in the city where there is either a curb ramp or we need to build one. Other accessibility improvements transportation did include upgrading five traffic signals to have accessible pedestrian signals. And you can see one of those in the photo that's on the right on the slide there. Also in that photo are two upgraded curb ramps and one of the new sidewalks that we built as part of the Franklin Street project. That project did include replacing four block faces of sidewalks downtown. And also, city maintenance crews fixed 27 sites of damaged sidewalks, nearly all of which were downtown. So the Parks Department funds ADA improvements at $200,000 per year through the Capital Facilities Plan, and they were able to upgrade facilities in five parks. The upgrades included remodeling dugouts and improving pathways in Yager Park and Stevens Field. They remodeled the upper restrooms in LBA Park. They added an accessible parking spot, entrance, and pathways to Evergreen Park. And the photos on the slide show a before and after of the entrance to Evergreen Park. In addition to the Parks Department's CFP ADA program, the Parks Department also completed repairing broken and heaving pavement on the Karen Fraser Willand Trail. They switched out swings to add an adaptive swing at Yager Park, and they added accessible picnic tables to six park shelters across Yager, Squawson, and LBA parks. For parking, one recommendation in the transition plan and also in the parking strategy was that the city assess and recommend ways to make city-owned public parking lots more accessible. This project was started in 2022, and the final memo has been posted to the city's ADA notice webpage. There were also several upgrades to some city-maintained buildings. For example, as part of the remodeling work to the Washington Center, the city created dedicated accessible spaces at the front of the venue and shifted some others around for greater access. We added handrails to the lodge section, which is what's shown in the photo here. The city also lowered the concession stand countertop, so it's now accessible to people in wheelchairs. We installed a cable tunnel system to prevent cables from being run up the aisleways. And we removed all mushroom-style air returns on the floor and replaced them with flat ones that can be walked or rolled over easily. Additionally, city facilities staff routinely check and adjust door openers at city buildings, and they make adjustments as needed. and they make adjustments as needed. Finally, in 2021, the city overhauled its website to be more accessible, not only to people with disabilities, but also to people who are not fluent in English. On every page, there is an accessibility menu that allows people to change the contrast, the font size, highlight links, change the text spacing, use dyslexia-friendly text, a reading guide, and there are many other features. The translate button allows users to translate the website into seventy-nine languages. So this menu is what's shown in the image on the slide. The 2022 report is focused on the built environment. We plan to continue that work, and we are already tracking the progress that we've made so far in 2023. And next year's report will also include some of the programmatic changes that we are working on, and such as providing staff more guidance on making documents and meetings more accessible. Making the city more accessible to people with disabilities is one of the many pieces of our diversity, equity and inclusion work, and it's a good example of how we've put inclusion into practice across all city departments. We've done a lot of great work, and we have more work to do. So I'd like to invite members of the public to review the report on our website. It's olympiawa.gov/ada, and I'm going to spell that out for those who may not be able to see the slide. O-L-Y-M-P-I-A-W-A dot G-O-V forward slash ADA. So thank you for your time. I'll turn this over to you for your discussion, and if you have any questions, Nicole and I are happy to answer them.
Thank you, Michelle, and it's nice to meet you, Nicole. Thanks for your work you do in HR. So questions? I've got Councilmember Partially. Councilmember, okay.
First, I think that's too cool on the website. I'm actually pretty dyslexic, and I didn't know that, and I've just lived my life missing letters out of words and words out of sentences, and I've always just translated it. So now I can actually go to the website and change my browser. So thank you. That's fantastic. My question is, I'm sure this is being done, but for myself and for the public, we're working on sidewalks and repairing sidewalks, and how are we marrying, just naturally marrying this work with the equity lens for the upcoming transportation? Did I say it right? Transportation master plan? I was like, oh my God, I said traffic. As well as some of the money that we are earmarking for sidewalk repair coming up?
Thank you. That is a great question, Councilmember Partially. I also have been working on that sidewalk repair project, so I am aware of all of the implications. So to answer your question, there's really two stages in our approach to sidewalk repair. The first is in the Preliminary Capital Facilities Plan, there is $500,000 for sidewalk repair, and that will be on the streets where we are currently maintaining street trees. So those are our larger streets. They tend to carry a lot of, a lot more pedestrian activity. They have, are often correlated to frequent transit routes. So that's sort of the stay the course, well, stay the course, that's, that's sort of the interim measure before getting to like a final approach on sidewalk repair because this is, it's a very complex issue. So that's step one is sidewalk repair on existing streets in the Preliminary Capital Facilities Plan at $500,000. There's an additional $100,000 in there for a full inventory of sidewalk repair, needed sidewalk repair in the city. And so the goal is, once we have a sense of the scope of all of the sidewalk repair that is needed in the city, and then also a sense of how much it costs, which is something that we'll be getting from the CFP program, we plan to be returning to the council likely in 2025 with that information and with some policy options to explore so that you can come up with a long-term policy approach for sidewalk repair. Long answer. I hope I got, got to your question.
That's perfect. I would just throw out there for you all, a constituent who's vision impaired has told me that not only are the sidewalks hard to walk on because it's, they can't tell if there's a curb, but they keep getting hit in the head with branches so that, you know, I might avoid just naturally walking by. Just throw that out there when we're looking at our sidewalks. What's the height of the branches hanging over the sidewalks?
All right. Councilmember Madron followed by Councilmember Payne.
Thanks for asking the sidewalk question, Lisa. I just wanted to make a couple of comments on this. For one, I'm really, really glad to hear you speaking about this work under the framework of equity, diversity and inclusion. I recall our, one of our founding members of the Social, Justice and Equity Commission was very concerned that people with disabilities would get left behind in the work, as they have been for many, for, for a very long time. So I'm really glad to hear that. And I also want to say that I think that this report is very timely because this week is the week without driving, October 2nd through the 8th, which is sponsored by Disability Rights Washington. So it started yesterday, and those of us who are able to do so, you know, there's a, the organization is asking that we commit to trying to go without a car for, for the week to show what it's like for people with disabilities, young folks, seniors and people who can't afford cars or gas to get around in the community. And this work is really important to make sure that those who necessarily need to get around it in other ways are able to do so. So, so thank you for your work on this. I know just being familiar with the amount of work we have to do on this, that we've got a lot more to do. I was actually just walking around a neighborhood today, looking at places where there just aren't curb ramps at all, and the only option is for somebody in a wheelchair is to actually just beat in the street because they can't get on it or off it at the sidewalk. So I'm looking forward to seeing what we can do for those kinds of improvements in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Payne.
Yes. Thank you, Michelle, and, and nice to meet you as well. First of all, I just have to say I'm very pleased to, to see this on our agenda, and as Councilmember Madron said, I'm very pleased that this work is considered part of our equity work. You know, the phrase "nothing about us without us" actually comes from the disability community, and it's something that we've sort of taken on in a larger context, but they do often get left behind. And frankly, any one of us could become disabled at any point in our lives, and so we should be thinking about our community members and our neighbors who need to lean on us to help them. And, you know, I was wondering about, you know, how do we assess the damages to our sidewalks in the community, or how do we come to know of them? That, that's a little elusive to me. I'm not sure how that happens. Obviously, I know that we'll have, we'll be bringing on a contractor to assess the state of our sidewalks citywide soon, but if I'm a community member and I see damages as I'm going about, is there a process for how I communicate that to the city? How does that work?
Great question. Thank you. Yes, there is. Please, we encourage people to please report that to us. And in most instances, the adjacent property owner is responsible for repairing the sidewalk under current city policy. So what we will do is we'll send a letter to the adjacent property owner and advise them of their responsibility to fix the sidewalk. We do track those requests. We do have an inventory of them, and the city is welcome, or excuse me, members of the public are welcome to report that either by going to our online portal where you can report these incidents, and we'll take it from there. You can email, email us, email publicworks@ci.olympia.wa.us. You could call us, so we'll take those, those comments or those concerns from any member of the public.
Thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Partially?
I just have to say, I went into the website and I put on dyslexia. I feel like this huge tension is off me. So whoever did this in communication, you guys get a gold star. Thanks for that report back.
So I just want to follow up on, I don't think everybody, you know, in Olympia understands if they own their home that they're responsible for the sidewalk in front of them, right? So we get a lot of these people reaching out to us like, you know, repair these sidewalks that's, you know, in the right of way. So is there a way that we can increase that awareness that, number one, that, that, you know, they're responsible for it? And then I just can't waste this opportunity to pitch something I've been pitching for probably eight years, which is, you know, that we could start a pilot with a matching grant program for neighbors to apply for, to, you know, fix the sidewalks. It would obviously duplicate our small budget for sidewalks immediately. And so I'm hoping as part of the scope of work with this consultant that you come back with a neighborhood matching grant program. So I don't know if that's under discussion, but I've been, been saying it for a long, long time. So anyhow, I had to take that opportunity, and I think that's all I had. So anything else? This was just a briefing, so we don't need action, and thanks for the report. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Good evening. All right. That takes us to council member reports. For Mayor's report, we will be observing Indigenous Peoples' Day on Monday, and as well, we will not have a council meeting next Tuesday, so our next business meeting will be October 17th. And we will, just planning ahead, we will not be having a council meeting on October 31st because that's Halloween, so we will be meeting on Monday, October 30th. All right. I'll go to my right. Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I have a couple of things to report. The Regional Housing Council met towards the end of September, and our staff presented on the long-term funding needs for Quinn Street Village. The hope is that the city can cover roughly a third of the costs through the regional funding process. A third of the cost could be covered there, and that a grant from Commerce could cover the remaining part of that for the next couple of years that we need that facility open, knowing that we eventually want to transition that to permanent supportive housing. So that was the discussion had at the RHC. After we see the results of the Commerce grant that's been applied for, there was talk about doing a set aside from the, from the regional funds to be able to make sure that that's covered for the duration that we need it. We also have a communications plan, which is great, so more work happening from the RHC to get out the good work about all of the, the work that is taking place across the region. And we also talked about legislative agenda, what it would look like for the Regional Housing Council to have regional priorities around housing and homelessness. And there's more discussion to be had there because it's not its own organization yet, and each jurisdiction has their own legislative agendas. There was just some talk about how, how we would, you know, navigate all of that, but there'll be more discussion on it next month. And the Land Use and Environment Committee also met at the end of September on the 28th. We worked on barriers to urban agriculture. We had an update from the Thurston Conservation District on a scope of work that they've been doing around community gardens, Farm My Yard program they've been working on, and then we had a presentation from our staff on some barriers to urban agriculture in our code, and we've got some next steps there to evaluate things around water access, you know, ag uses in downtown area, farm supporting structures, stuff like that. Fun stuff, I assure you. We also had a really great report on metrics around our housing and homelessness work. We have seven hundred and twenty-six units of affordable housing in the pipeline to be built in the next four years, and that is just incredible. And I'll, I'll just leave you with that little tidbit. There was, there was a lot of, lot of good stuff in there, but that was like the most exciting one there. And we also, finally, we had an update on the comprehensive plan process. We are looking at, just as we did last time, 20,000 new residents in the next 20 years, which would bring us in 2024, 2025, up to eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty residents in Olympia. And just so you all are aware that as the process goes through, we as a council are going to be getting chapters that have, that are seeing significant changes, either because of work that we are doing or what we are doing as a result of legislative action. And these chapters will be brought to us for review as they're available, and then, and then when all that is complete, they'll be compiled as a packet for the, the whole EIS process and, and for a vote altogether. So that's, that's my report.
Any questions for Councilmember Madron? All right. We'll go on to Councilmember Payne.
Yes. I neglected to mention this last week, but I just wanted to take this time to give a shout out to the organizers and the sponsors of Lulafest that we had a couple of weeks ago in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month here in the city of Olympia. So it's obviously one of our newest cultural festivals, and, you know, it was a very small and intimate gathering, but there was lots of activity going on, and unfortunately, it was another event where we got, you know, sort of rained out for a bit, but folks still come, came out, and it was a great event. You know, some beautiful music from Anjali Silva, The Bridge Music Project and other folks who I always appreciate hearing, and, you know, I just, it's, it's an event that obviously you can see over time will just continue to grow, and I'm excited to, to welcome it to the community. So that's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Partially.
This one's for you, Cheryl, because last week we couldn't get to all the reports, so I saved my lot report because you only have two more after this.
Thank you so much. It means so much.
Oh, yeah. I thought so. So we started our Lot Board meeting up with a tour of the digestors, which was kind of fun, if you're a geek like me. We got news that we are going to be rebuilding those, and we just received a $10 million loan, which is going to be about 1.25% interest because it's through the state public works grants, I believe, or loans, which is awesome. We also had another conversation about procuring our equipment long before we go to actually getting the contractors as well as doing, because we're Public Works, an RFQ, RFP combined, looking for our contractor to make sure not only are they the lowest, but most qualified to be able to do the project. But, and we started our, our strategic planning because our permits are required to have a strategic plan for 30 years, and so this is a big one. It's starting in this fall, and will go through next year. I'm going to end with this because I think it's kind of cool. They have done an energy assessment for Lot, and what we have been able to save in the last two years through the Cascade Energy Assessment, and the equivalents of the energy that we have saved would power 2.9 million miles, EV miles, 22 homes for one year, reduced metric tons by 1.43 million, and would have been the equivalent of nearly 19,000 trees planted over the next 10 years. So Lot is doing a very good job with climate change.
That wasn't that long.
I can keep going.
That wasn't the whole agenda.
No.
So any questions for Councilmember Part? All right. Councilmember Payne.
That wasn't that long. Amazing. Appreciate it. So.
Poop's fun.
On September 27th, the Community, Liveability and Public Safety met for a regular committee meeting, and two big topics really. The first would be the Youth Council, so we are the sort of first to see their recommendations. That'll be coming to this full body this month, actually later this month. Really, really just in awe of the amount of work that the young people in, in this area has put, put into this. Also very appreciative of the city of Olympia staff that have worked on it as well. Really, really impressed by, by the just tenacity and like the foresight of the young people, and I, I think that you all will be really, really interested in, in hearing what the work group has come up with. Just as a reminder, it's been myself, we have Susan Grisham. I'm looking at you, Susan. Yeah, really, really helping, leading the charge on the staff side of it, as well as Kelly, Kelly Persbraseth. And then Paul, you've been an earlier contributor. And then Paul, you've been an earlier contributor. And then we have Amy, who is now in Lewis County. But we still appreciate Amy. And, yeah, and then two, like spectacular high school-aged Olympia high school youth, and then about 44 additional youth advisors in this area. Like, very, very cool. And they were not shy in taking a part in the presentation as well, so, and leading it even. So really exciting. And then, of course, I shouldn't forget True Clusion, the consultant team. So we're bringing data from across the country, like what are standard and what are best practices. Really, really cool stuff. So I guess I'll save the rest for them. And then the other item that we had was looking at, in response to a referral, a recent referral, for looking at how the salary commission is, is brought together, right? Who serves on the salary commission? What is the process of that? Pretty timely. Also, we acknowledged in the meeting with the transitioning of our mayor, that's been the mayor for some time now for Olympia, so a little bit kind of the end of an era. And then whoever the new mayor is coming in, figuring out what that process is, getting it documented, seeing if there, first is having it written down, but then also seeing if there are areas for improvement and having that, you know, we talk about having an equity lens and having the framework going forward in our practices. And so having our staff that, our DEI staff, looking at the process. So we had what was an initial discussion, and so, yeah, so more to come on that. Let me know if you have any questions. It was a good meeting.
Any questions for Councilmember Payne? All right. Oh, did you see your hand? I'm just imagining it must've. I always sing that song, whip your hair back and forth. Anyhow, you're going to miss me, I know. Councilmember Cooper.
I saw your hair moving out of the corner of my eye, too. Thank you, Mayor Selby. Just, just two reflections tonight. One, I just wanted to say how pleased I was that you brought former Mayor Protem Carboni's story to the council and, and his family coming. And I think it was just perfect that we also, on a moment when we're acknowledging the entire history of our community with our Declaration of Indigenous Peoples' Day. So looking back and then looking even further back, and that's something that's not, wasn't normal 12 years ago when I started in, in local government. And it's, it's a great improvement in how we view our community. And so just wanted to reflect on that. And then a small personal note, this week I was appointed to the School District Facility Feasibility Study Committee as a Washington middle school parent. And it's going to be fascinating and interesting, but one of the things that I want to bring up here is the predictions for a pretty significant decline in our school population. You know, in my mind, that was about COVID and the switch we're seeing from public school to private and, and homeschool. But really, that is about a prediction in a pretty significant decline in the number of children in our society as families grow smaller, largely driven by the housing crisis and it resulting in smaller floor plans and, and harder economic situations for so many people. And so I wanted to bring that up, because I, I think it'll be important over the next year that the population estimates that we're using for our comp plan match what the school district is saying in the community. And so at, at some point, we need to come together and make sure that we, us two and TRPC agree on those population predictions, because I think there's can be some pretty significant implications even outside of school, as you look at different systems that are built to serve children, and needing to have enough kids to like keep your childcare center open, or, not that we have too much childcare right now, but, you know, that might be a, a side benefit of, of a decline in that population. But, you know, just to kind of, to think about that a little bit as a, as a city, as we move ahead, and what the implications might be, it will certainly result in some very tough conversations around schools and school boundaries, that we should be ready to say, that's their job.
I just want to thank Councilmember Cooper for stepping up into that role. I served on that committee in 2015, and it's vastly different what we're looking at as far as population. And also, I don't think it's allowed that Maggie become a middle school student. That's like, I remember when she was born. So anyhow, that's crazy. I also just point privilege, I forgot to add that I did, I had the honor of walking around downtown this last week with our police chief, Rich Allen, and we did door-to-door business visits, and it was just wonderful to meet employees, business owners, some property owners, and able to, you know, get feedback from them, as well as share some updates about the, the homeless response team and some of the changes within that, including the, the shifting of the ambassador program into a downtown dedicated crew walking patrol. People were very excited about that. And so looking forward to that program becoming more robust in January, and also let, we let them know that the Downtown Guide program is going to be having some enhanced coverage through the holidays. So, good stuff, but I really want to thank Chief Allen for taking time out of his busy schedule to walk around with me. So with that, we have a city manager or acting city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I have nothing to report.
Aw.
Sorry to disappoint.
I know. Everybody's sure. With no further business, before the Olympia City Council, word adjourned.